Why buy your next vehicle from Community Motors of Mason City?
Great service from three locations. Community on Monroe, Community Motors West Side, and Mason City Ford. Ten new franchises and hundreds of vehicles to give you more choices. Plus, Community offers an exclusive 3-3 warranty on pre-owned vehicles, and 10-year, 250,000-mile warranty on new. Need more reasons why? Stop or visit communityautogroup.com.
Because nobody beats a Community deal, nobody.
We're going to go ahead and start, and welcome. You can come in, Mike. Welcome. How are you, Mike? I know. This is Mike. We decided to have it in here this year to start out with. I mean, we ended up last year in the bigger room, but I think this is cozier, and, you know, people are more likely to speak in a smaller room and a cozier atmosphere.
It's a little more intimate.
We're here to talk to you. Mike sat in the front row, but if you want to sit in the back chair and enjoy a little bit. And there are programs here, too, for all of you that we're still having winter, and it sounds like tomorrow's going to be a reassurance.
Well, Amanda?
Yes.
You look much better in person than you do in your political flyers.
Yeah, I take that as a compliment.
As a compliment.
I wore the right color today.
I wore the right color.
I'll be sure you sign in. Make sure you've signed in so we can send you our newsletters. If you'd like one mailed, you could put a little note by that. I do mail some out.
Believe it or not, people actually enjoy those things, so we're... Anyway, so last week was a little bit of an organizational time. We had our first committee meetings organizational, a lot of new faces, a lot more in the House than in the Senate. But there's always... I've been there, you know, ten-plus years, and I'm amazed how many new faces are in the chambers. But we also had a condition of the state by the governor, and we had a condition of the judiciary by Supreme Court Justice Katie. So we go over to the House chambers where there's lots more room. They have room for all of us to come over and...
We're friendly.
They're friendly. And so we go over to listen to the condition states now. You know, we have also started some proposals on our own. The Senate Education Committee is... And Appropriations Committee, actually. There will be some legislation moving forth on allowable growth. And we think schools have been told that they're going to get allowable growth, and it's actually the law. And we believe that's the direction to move. We're proposing 4%. And then we're also funding... If we had a chalkboard here, we could do the whole education formula, because it becomes extremely complex, and people get a little confused by it. Blazed over is probably a good word on some of it. But we're also planning on replenishing the 16 million and the 22 million with money out of the taxpayer trust fund that was set aside for... I think that was a year and a half ago that we did that. So that's one of our proposals. We can talk about that in depth. I don't want to get into stuff that maybe that's not what you want to talk about. Human services, we continue to meet on mental health. I don't think there's been a week in my life that we have in the chamber that we haven't had a 7:30 meeting on mental health. And what we're seeing across the state is the... Since the state took over as of July 1, the non-federal share Medicaid, there has been some concerns on many of the counties' parts. We told them that there was not going to be a reduction in anyone's services, and we want to make sure that that continues to happen. There's been some confusion on the transition funds. We have counties that have no money in their funds for mental health because they have to be specific. And we want to make sure that there's the ability for people to continue to provide those services. And we hear many people, you know, with the efforts going on about how to solve the problem of what happened in Connecticut. We hear a lot of opportunities to talk about mental health. Well, let's make sure that we make sure in the state of Iowa that we're addressing those needs. So that's a couple of brief things. Glad to talk about lots of other stuff, but I think we got to give Sharon a chance here.
I'll just let the senator go first, and then I know what to cover when she's done. It's nice, we have a good working relationship down at the Capitol. And if I'm wondering what's going on in the Senate, I can go over and visit with Amanda and get some ideas on what direction they're headed. And I have a very good relationship with the Education Committee. We met Thursday in the afternoon with their... I met with the education people and kind of talked through what they are proposing. The day we were sworn in, we get... We were sworn in at 10:00. Well, at 9:00 a.m., the governor had his big press conference on his reform package. So with everybody having family there and, you know, the House and the Senate, none of us were there, but the governor laid out his proposal. And there are some really interesting things in it, some things that I think would be very helpful for all of us. There's more money putting... Put into Iowa Learning Online, which is the state online learning group that, you know, has not been funded very well, and they want to do more funding for that. Teach Iowa Initiative, helping people that are in college with financially and encouraging them to stay in the teaching profession. If they would give five years in Iowa, then their loan would be gradually... They would help pay their loan off that they got, you know, while they were in college. So those two issues I really like. The career ladder and compensation piece is... Everybody's trying to muddle through how that would all work. You know, you have different levels, mentor. We've got a whole diagram here. I don't know if some of you were in Clear Lake when Jason Glass... Director Glassman showed it, but it's... You have career, teacher, well, beginning teacher, and then career, model, mentor, lead, administrator. And each step is more pay and more days of work. And so their idea is you could be down here as a lead teacher and then go back to career. It's... The whole way it will work is a little confusing now, but we're working on that. Some districts are already doing lots of this kind of thing. And the person that's maybe the mentor teacher is doing a supplemental pay like a football coach would do. And that seems to be working. So that's one of the issues. Another one is Iowa Promise, high school graduation, you get a seal on your diploma if you pass certain tests. And that seal would mean that you would be automatically admitted to the regions and community colleges, and employers would know you're a good person to hire. So I'm having some issues with... I mean, there are just, you know, pieces of it that we don't know about yet. We've got to get together. So anyway, he came out with this initiative on Monday at 9:00 a.m. and said that he wanted it passed before any allowable growth was done for schools. Well, last year, allowable growth by law has to be passed 30 days after the governor presents his budget. Last year, we did not do that. So schools don't know going into negotiations or just planning their budget for 2014. They have no idea what to expect. The Senate is starting a bill with 4% allowable growth for schools. That's kind of a cost of living type thing. And they will send it over, and I am hoping that we'll take that up right away and that we can get the governor to sign it. Although he said we have to do the reform bill before he'll sign any funding for schools.
That's 4% over what it was two years ago?
Two years ago, it was... It's been...
6,000 per pupil.
Yeah, we are... We are like...
Because like you said, last year, there was nothing done.
Right, no allowable growth. They have a chart here.
Oh, no allowable growth.
Yeah.
We didn't put any money into the allowable growth and...
But they knew that the amount of budget they were getting, though.
Well, they knew what the amount of budget they were getting, but there was no growth to that.
Right, and it's not just salaries that grow. It's like your, you know, transportation. We have rural schools that are spending $1,300 a pupil, a student, on transportation.
Oh.
So of that $6,000 figure, which is below average in the nation, of that figure per pupil, they're spending 1,300 of it just to get the kid to school. So then, they don't have the money for, you know, programs and other things that schools that don't have that transportation problem can use that money, you know, for lots of other programs.
Doctor, I had a question.
Oh.
I just had a question about your proposals. Do we have tax certifications?
Well, that's what we've tried to... The 16 million and the 22 million, we're going to put in out of that taxpayer trust fund that we had set aside in the past. So we're not increasing the taxes. The property taxes.
Property taxes.
Because right now, there's, what, 60 million in that taxpayer trust fund?
Right.
And that's what it's supposed to be used for is...
And these are not the reserve funds.
This is totally separate.
This is a totally separate taxpayer. So yes, there will not be...
You mentioned the guaranteed acceptance at state universities for people who have a special seal on their diploma passing tests, et cetera. What if takes place what happened in Texas and California, where a number of people who had that were guaranteed that the universities and colleges did not have the availability for them?
States.
Does that create a waiting list for people? Has that been addressed to best of your knowledge?
I don't think... We really haven't gotten that far into the discussion. I met with the Chair of the Education Committee. He and I will be working together on this reform package. We have a subcommittee of seven people. We'll be meeting Tuesday at 5:00 p.m. and start our initial look at the entire bill. We're kind of in the... You know, this just came at us quite quickly, so...
But I think what Representative Steckman's saying here is we need to move on allowable growth and talking about... To the schools about what they're going to have in their budgets, because they have to certify those and move forward. This proposal is somewhat complex. I mean, questions you have, questions others are going to have. There needs to be some...
Lots of discussion.
To have discussion, it has to pass two chambers. You don't have much fun that yet. So I mean, we, you know, it is. So we think, yeah, there's some good things in the proposal, but we need to air those, have discussions back in our districts, back at Capitol, and all of that, work things out. So moving on this in the 30 days is critical, because we're really talking about best investment we have in the state of Iowa, which is our children.
4% will be running short of what they're used to considering inflation and everything.
Sure. But, okay, I guess that's where...
Are there any controversial parts of this that one party or the other is going to oppose each other?
Maybe. I forgot, before I started talking, to apologize for my eyes. I'm allergic to something, and so they're really red this morning. I'm not annoying anyone.
I can make crap about that, but I'm going to avoid all those things.
Yes, dude, yeah.
Usually I do those.
The seal on the high school diploma bothers... I mean, I was just going to mention the fact that I met with the Chair of the Education Committee, and both of us have little... Are having trouble with that. Because what you're doing is, well, then what good is a high school diploma? You know, if you're going to separate one group here with a seal and then another group without a seal, so, you know, it's... Why don't we all shoot for that level of graduation? You know, that diploma means something for everybody that graduates. And I guess when the reform package came out, for me, we started and put forth some third-grade literacy things that we wanted to see implemented, and there was no... Excuse me. There were no funds put in that program. The only money that was spent last year on the last reform package that we worked on was $2 million out of the 40 million that was originally suggested. $2 million for a literacy center to be put in Des Moines that they're working on. We have a literacy center, you and I, already, so it was like that... You know, we have a literacy program in place, the policy that we passed last year that they have not funded. And I would like to see money go for things like that. And addressing the poverty. I've told many people, I never thought, when I was an educator, that instead of sending backpacks home with books in them, I would be sending backpacks home with food, so that kids aren't going hungry all weekend. And then I talked to the high school... Mason City High School's even doing it on their own. Their PTO is doing it for kids, for families that don't have food over Christmas. So, you know, I'm thinking, if the kids coming to school hungry, we need to be addressing those issues, to make sure they're ready to learn. And if you're going to start this seal program for the high school diploma next year, the kids have had no time to get ready for something like that. So, you know, the implementation... There's a lot of issues to work out. And the fact that superintendents have told me, if you don't have a number to us for our budgets by March 1st, we can't get it done and get them certified for next year. We'll have to just assume we're getting, you know, the 0%. So that's what we need to do first.
And that's not good for encouraging teachers and the whole profession as well.
Last year, actually, I brought it up two or three times. I asked for suspension of the rules and a vote on the percent that the Senate had sent over, and it was defeated. So we just didn't get it passed. So I'm hoping this year, they send it over and, you know, we get it passed within the first 30 days. Just a minute, I was a hand up back here first, now I'll get to the...
Well, it seems like that you kind of play around with funny things like seals. Don't people look at the records of the students? You know, they have report cards, and that tells you whether or not they're doing well or not. So this seal is just a bunch of fluff.
Well, and it would be taking the ACT or taking a career readiness test. That would be part of the seal. And there's a 13-member commission they want to set up to decide what would go into this. So I'm thinking more bureaucracy, which maybe we don't need.
Not big on having commissions.
Yeah.
We just streamlined government, got rid of a lot of them five years ago, so we're not good at adding commissions. We don't like commissions.
Oh, here it is. The first year of the reform adds $17 million more to the Department of Ed. So right there, I'm a little cautious. And I think about 20 new positions, so... Oh, wait. Katie, did you get to talk?
No, I'm not leaving.
Okay.
She's shut in the door. She's a teacher.
Yeah.
So Katie is going back there.
We don't want any distractions.
As far as the seal goes, I wanted to know what criteria that was being established on kids, because once again, if it is standardized test scores, there are kids who are great at taking tests and you applaud them, and there are kids who are not, and then we have the haves and have-nots again.
Right.
And education is the key to getting out of poverty, and so I'm worried about that.
Yeah, I agree, and I'm totally on that page with you.
I know you are.
You know, I was one of those kids that was not a good test taker.
Right.
And, you know, I was one of those kids that couldn't sit still on my desk. I was all... That's why I wanted to be a teacher, because I wanted to help those kids that I knew had a different learning style. And I really think we're not addressing that right. You know, that's what I'd like to see. The third-grade literacy, get some money into that program. Help kids out in college. We're one of two states that does not have a scholarship for our public universities from the state.
And we're also one that doesn't invest in adult basic education.
Right.
Because while we have a low unemployment rate, we have a lot of people that are underemployed. And that's why you have your problems.
Our college students are graduating with way too much debt.
One of the top in the nation.
Exactly, so what's being done to address that? And could we use some of the surplus money? You know, we're debating now what to do with all the extra money. That seems like a good use.
I think so. I actually have a bill that I'm going to take over to the Senate and see if they'll start it over there, which would fold in one of the tuition grant programs, do away with one, and take that money and put it in the Iowa Opportunity Grant, and make it just for public community college regions, those kids that need an extra, some extra dollars to, you know, for help for college. Because we do have one of the highest debt rates in the country.
And low wages because of our right to work law.
Well, and sometimes that's why people go out of the state, because...
Yeah, exactly, that's why my kids left.
Well, exactly, because you're going to go where there's faster repayment of your debt, probably. I just would stand to reason.
Do you have a question? Well, yeah, I have questions and concerns. When we're talking about this, when we're talking about income, employability, and college, if we're putting a seal on a diploma, are we saying to all the kids who don't have a seal, we're sorry, you're done. You're not employable because you don't have the seal.
See, that's right.
You can't go to college because you don't have the seal. Are we just going to write those people off?
That's... Those are questions when Director Glass from Department of Ed will come to our subcommittee. We're going to go through the bill division by division, like we did last year.
And we'll force it.
Those are exactly the questions that we will be asking him.
We would be forcing those people into poverty.
Yes.
Low wage jobs. Well, and what would be their... What would be their initiative to finish high school?
Even the choice for them, where some don't.
Yeah.
So those are exactly the questions that we're...
Haven't really gotten to that point in their life where they're paying attention.
I want to start way before that, way before that, you know. I've asked the Department of Ed for results of the third-grade testing of those kids that went to four-year-old preschool the state and those that did not, and I have not received them yet. So if I don't get them by the time we have our next Education Committee meeting, the big meeting with everybody there, I'll ask publicly and see if I can get those results.
That's one of the things that we're very concerned about, is repurposing the money. We want to make sure that we still continue to invest in preschool and that we continue to invest in classroom size reduction, because the smaller we get the groups, then people are able to interact. Lauren?
Yes. Speaking of preschool, years ago, administrative costs were $33.33 for preschool in Yext. Has that changed any? I mean, the Department of Education, you know, I know that basically they spend thousands of dollars back just for administrative costs. You know that, Bill.
Yeah, what I would like to see done with preschool is have it follow the child... The money follow the child like K-12 does. I think that would ideally be the best...
Well, it doesn't have full weighting at this point.
I know, but you know, if you talk about...
They actually cut back on the weighting. That's why I want to see the results. Because if I can show that those kids have improved faster and are doing better than the kids that had no preschool at all, then that will help our...
My research is quite clear on that.
I know, but you have to...
Well, may...
Test scores.
They don't have all the scores in their defense on that at this point. But I think one of the things that we see is excitement about education. If you can hook into kids and keep them excited, I mean, that's how you get them moving forward.
What's Iowa Learning Online that you made reference to?
It's a state-run online...
It's not the out-of-state.
Right, for-profit.
This is not for profit. These are about, you've got, you know, lots of travel, so maybe it's a calculus class. Maybe it's a chemistry or... For some of those, then maybe you've got schools at a distance, and, you know, you've got a half an hour to any school that you're going to get to. So why waste time on the road when you've got some learning online opportunities and explore some of that investment?
I think even when... I have a son who graduated in 1999, and even when he was in high school, they were doing calculus...
Right.
With a link to a school in western Iowa.
Well, what's had... What happened last year, two schools decided to go totally online, K-12. But that was with for-profit. And so I think that kind of woke everybody up. Wait a minute, we need to be making sure we have qualified Iowa-certified teachers teaching these kids, and that the money's not all leaving the state. I mean, if you pay a for-profit online company, the price per pupil, like they negotiated, I think they're paying them over $5,000 per pupil, that money's not staying in the state, it's leaving, you know. So it kind of woke us all up to, we need to do something about our Iowa Online.
So is something that is going to be done about the online education, the out-of-state people?
Yeah, we put pretty much...
That was in last year's...
So it's not going to be...
So there's only a certain amount of money can be spent.
Will we have to talk about it again?
Well, I think we're much more aware of that happening. It's phasing out for these districts by 2015. Or 2015, excuse me. Right, how we make laws, you know, all the time. But sometimes things like that happen, and we have to put a stop to something like that.
And what are you getting for the money, too?
Right. Well, exactly, exactly.
They had preschool online, I mean...
I said, well, how do... They had... They came and they were in the rotunda showing...
And some of us might like that.
And there is a need. Some kids have a need for it online. You know, they can't get to school, or there's a physical problem or whatever. But I said to the... One of the instructors, I said, well, how do you do like an interaction? Kindergarten, they need to learn to socialize with other kids. And she said, well, we have virtual parties. No, no, I mean, real people, face-to-face, you know, talking.
My amazing girlfriend.
So I really feel there's a place for online learning, and there's definitely a place for...
There was a football player who had a virtual girlfriend, so...
There, Alan, let's bring him to the reality.
You did come, huh?
Tony Bats, time for...
We were wondering where you were.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to switch gears a little bit for education. And first, I want to commend you for having the town hall meeting.
Sure.
You know, it's much more than we're going to get from the city government. And, you know, at least you'll answer questions and hear concerns.
Try to.
I want to talk about your work with the Chamber of Commerce. You had Robin Anderson down there this week. You secured 1.5 million for the Commerce Center. Tell me how you're working together with the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, yeah, can I go ahead?
Okay.
All right, go ahead. Because first of all, we meet with lots of people that don't agree with us 100%, trust me.
Okay. Okay. See, so for the record, you don't agree with the Chamber of Commerce and their agenda, or...
Well, I don't, you know, what their agenda is, but at this point, what happened was, we get people that come in. If you come to the chamber...
Right, and I know you've made that clear that she'll meet with anybody.
Yeah.
Of course. And this is all meant with utmost respect for both of you ladies, okay? But I do want to have a discussion about it.
So let me.
So continue.
She was down talking about...
Not for us, she was there for the ABI meeting in Des Moines.
She came in, said she was looking at the governor's proposal. And of course, took that opportunity to share with her our proposal. You were there.
I did.
Talked about what I thought of. And so we shared what we're doing, and that was our encounter conversation.
Okay.
And then there was this issue with a bad picture. So that's when we took the picture, because there was a...
In the last chamber letter.
Last chamber. It was a very, very bad picture. I particularly think it was of Representative Steckman.
Well, you guys never take a bad picture, but...
But anyway, so now we had a great picture. And because we know that sometimes my pictures are not flattering how we do that today.
Right.
But what I'm trying to say is, we meet with lots of folks.
Okay.
Do I know what their whole... I have no idea, you know.
Okay, but let me stop you for a moment.
And then we can go back to the Commerce Center.
Just one moment here. It's widely known that the Chamber of Commerce is against deregulating... Actually, they want to deregulate Wall Street. They want to keep wages low, they're anti-labor. I know you've both been out to the sugar plant. But you did secure 1.5 million dollars...
That had to do with flood money.
Okay.
And...
But one second, one second. You did secure 1.5 million for the Commerce Center, which is...
Right, it was legal Commerce Center.
It is not accessible to regular folks.
Well, and that's... That is not the way it should be. My feeling was, we had an opportunity, and it came a lot with Cedar Rapids. And they approached us to help with getting this funding, and it had to do with communities that had problems during the floods.
Okay.
And that was where this whole discussion started. It was actually funded through the community colleges. We didn't give it to the chamber, so it was...
But Amanda, one second now. It's been widely reported that due to the work of you two ladies, they... I mean, it was bragged about in the local media, not in my media, but in the other media, that due to the work of you two ladies, they... That 1.5 million was secured for the Chamber of Commerce.
What isn't necessarily for the Chamber.
But it's reported that way so that there's that... But it's reported that way so that there's that, there's that perception out there that you two work with the Chamber of Commerce.
We worked for North Iowa to get money for the restoration of Clear Lake.
There's no question you've done great work with other entities, no question there.
List off things.
But I want to stick to the, yeah, there's no question you've done great things and helped a lot of other entities. But I do want to talk about the Chamber here. You have to be a Chamber of Commerce member to even go in there and pay a fee then to use the meeting room there. And this is one point five million of my money, their money, poor people's money, people that don't have money to buy food in poverty that you just talked about. This is an exclusive club with an agenda that flies in the face of the Democratic Party, which you represent. And you secured one point five million dollars for them to further. When a Chamber of Commerce member pays a due, that money then goes to Washington DC as one of the largest lobbying groups in the nation to fight against the exact things that you guys stand for. Have championed, have done a great job of championing.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think anyone can question our record.
No.
I'm not questioning your record whatsoever, but I do question the one point five million and what's going on downtown at that Commerce Center, which is not accessible and is not doing anything for.
I will definitely check into that, I didn't.
Okay, it's right, it's right off of their website, I printed it, ma'am.
Main Street is housed there, you know.
Right, but I would.
Which is a separate entity than the Chamber.
One moment, just about done here. What have they done for the people in Mason City, though? What has Visit Mason City done, what has the Chamber of Commerce done? Where are the jobs? We got poverty here, what have they done for that one point, that's the second piece to my question here. What's the return on investment? We've got one point five million in there, what's the growth, where's the jobs? If my tax dollars paid for it, why can't I use it, why can't these folks use it? Can you answer that before you go to this gentleman, please?
Well, I'm going to answer this question.
Oh, well, then I'll take any answer anybody wants to give, but I definitely want to hear from you ladies.
How about that recycling plant they turned down? A huge recycling plant they turned down.
About just a minute.
That's a different point.
That was a good reason, and next town turned it down also.
That was not a good deal for Mason, go ahead.
Oh, but the right on the park, for instance, was one of the things the Chamber did work with and the council all the time.
The state helped with that.
And that has been tremendous, in spite of all the people that thought it would not be. We have tremendous growth and people coming in and spending money throughout for a long.
I'd agree with you there.
For probably a hundred years.
Downtown is very, very, you know, hopping at night in the hotel.
Well, we just lost another business this week, but go ahead.
Streetscape, though, was completely redone and that has, it's going to just continue to bring in people.
I think.
Versus deterioration what we had before.
And Main Street is, they hired a new director and they're going to.
Right, but it's a little off topic because I just want to focus on the Commerce Center and the one point five million. It's money coming in, but the Commerce Center didn't do any of that, though.
Narrowly focused.
Well, one point five million is a lot of money, I mean, I just want to.
Narrowed it down to that one little deal.
Well, absolutely, because that's one transaction that I wanted to get answers about. And you've been very gracious in answering my questions.
Well, I looked at it as an improvement for Mason City. It was money that was going to go somewhere, why not have it go to our town, downtown, and, you know.
Was that money, let me just stop you for one second, was that money, did it have to go to a project like that? Or could it have went to address poverty, underemployment, food, children without, did it have to go to that, or?
It was for communities that had been impacted by the flood.
Okay.
And it was a regional commerce center. I would have to get the legislation out to see what.
Right, but you have to be a member to use it, so it's very misleading when it says regional. If I come over here from Clear Lake or Garner.
I'm not a member, I've been in there, but I've never.
But you can't use the.
Rented the rumor.
I guarantee you, okay, they've got Frank Lloyd Wright style lamps in there. They've got granite countertops. Was one point five million really needed, I just, I have it on the computer, I just looked it up. The building's only assessed at three hundred and some thousand dollars. That means one and a half million dollars went into carpet, granite countertops. They have Mr. Toot statues on the artwork all over the walls.
Have you talked to them about this?
We've got people in poverty here, have I talked to who?
To them.
To them.
Well, I don't think Robin Anderson is going to really want to discuss too much with me. I've tried to call her and she either doesn't take the caller, hangs up, so. I would rather go to the people, well, because I'm asking questions that people don't want to talk about, but I think they deserve to be asked. I think that, you know, I'm just disappointed that, you know, at what has gone on down there. I think that that's an exclusive club. Again, you have to join to get anything in there and I'm just disappointed in it.
Definitely check into that.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
The point of having a picture taken with her, I feel my job, like today, is to listen to everyone. I may not agree, I may not agree, but I'm going to listen, I'm going to listen to both sides. And try and do what I feel most of the people in this community would want me to do.
But does that concern you that Robin Anderson in our chamber has a, have an open checkbook at our city hall? They've just secured forty thousand in one week, it took them one week for statues downtown, or sculptures, excuse me. They've apparently can go to the state level and get one point five million fairly easily. Now she's planning another trip to Washington, that's three levels of government that she's touched. Okay, that she's now going to have an impact on. She's going to go and sit in both of our senators' offices and our state representatives and our, at all levels there, not the president, obviously, but the House and Senate.
And any citizen.
This is furthering their agenda, which is against what you two stand for. You run a soup kitchen, you're a teach, ex-teacher, and I mean that respectfully when I say this now, but you have provided them with a Taj Mahal over here to further.
No, I think it's another piece of the downtown area that's needed updating.
That was what the.
Well, I'm fearing that you didn't look into it close enough because what they're doing is they are going out and just recruiting members. That's their main thing. I've talked to people, they have meetings, they have chamber members meeting in a boardroom and they talk about how they can all go out and get more chamber members. Okay, so they are literally recruiting people to pay dues to fight against what you guys have, are trying to accomplish.
Well, any club or organization has meetings to figure out how to get more members.
But that's their main thing is just to grow their memberships, to pay dues.
Well, I don't want to make this a listening post vendetta against anybody.
No, it's not a vendetta, I'm pointing, trying to just respectfully point things out. I want to bring this to your attention, absolutely, and I know you will.
The building.
And again, I, again, having these listening posts is way more than we get on, from our city government because they could never take the heat and they probably couldn't answer the questions as intelligently as you two have.
Well, what I would say is.
Well, that's my opinion.
It was a regional commerce center, you know, that's what the intent was. It was not supposed to be specifically Chamber.
I'll be happy to.
It's meant for entrepreneurial businesses that can't afford a building or a room of their own. There are places there they can go.
So technology should have been used there for people to be able to come in.
Yes, ma'am, if you pay the dues and join.
But that was our understanding.
Not your intention, I'm sure, for it to go that way, but that's how it has gone.
What was going to happen.
I'm sorry, Amanda.
That was the understanding of what was going to happen, that it would be.
So in other words, you were misled.
And I.
Were you misled then? Because you were just.
Well, it's misled, I'm going to check on it, see if that's what's going to happen.
Okay, I printed it right off their website, right here. Meeting rooms are available by use for Mason City Chamber of Commerce members only. Meeting are available only eight to four-thirty during Chamber Commerce hours. I mean, just, I'm just telling you, you know, I'm just bringing this, I mean, somebody's got to do this. This isn't my cup of tea, but this, somebody's got to start talking about this stuff or we're all getting screwed here and I'm just, it annoys me.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry to.
And you know where we stand.
I know you two have the best of intentions, absolutely, no, I'm not questioning that.
Fairness to us, I think sometimes you could come to us and ask us before attacking us on.
I'm not attacked, no, don't say I'm attacking you, please, because I'm not trying to, I just did my homework, that's it.
Stand next to somebody in a picture, whoa.
Yeah, but you gave them one point five million dollars, though, that's, 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 a picture's one thing, but one point five million's another. I mean, now, now she's.
They pay their own dues, right?
Well, I don't know who in their right mind would join the Chamber of Commerce, they do nothing. I was a member for two years, they did nothing but send me an invoice, so that's another topic. And I'll have something else to talk about.
I'm going to defend, that's.
No, I wouldn't do that either, no, but I'm done with that, so thank you.
Switching gears.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll check on you.
Thank you very much.
Give me that second page.
I'll give you all this, absolutely.
Because I'm not a member, so I can.
Of course.
There were a lot of budget cuts.
Thanks for your questions.
Yes.
And some of them were very painful.
In the past.
Yes, in the last few years. But, okay, what I'm saying, now we have this big surplus, what do you see as some of the places where we need to put money back? To restore programs, and I'm thinking, you know, did we stop mowing the parks and?
Well, I think first of all, that's one of the things that the natural resources. You've got your education budget that's, you know, fifty-five to sixty percent, then you've got Medicaid that was a huge part. Because our unemployment has changed, we get a lesser return from the feds now. No good deed goes unpunished. And that's just a piece of it. We also have a lot of social services that have taken no increase in any kind of support for individuals that are in their home, home health care. We did some last year that because of the budget was tight, we started them in January. And the Human Services Budget, which I am part of, we stayed till the very end because there were some issues that we really, we see folks that are out there doing the home health care or the childcare assistance that we actually got an increase, but it's not up to the rate that it even should be. We have the most vulnerable Iowans in this care. We want to make sure that there's a good investment, so increases there. We also have even cut, you know, like the parks, you're saying, mowing has been one of those things. We went to volunteers and lots of things.
I mean, troopers, troopers have been cut.
State Patrol, it's the safety issue. But we've got a philosophy that we want to streamline government and not have waste, but we also want to make sure that that investment. We don't have enough money in the governor's budgets with prison to open the new prison yet. We need to look at the FTE, so we have to make sure that those are things that we invest in because there's a safety issue.
If you read Tyler Olson's piece in the Globe Gazette yesterday, I work with Tyler Olson, Olson and House, very knowledgeable about the budget. In 2010, we had a surplus, we had a surplus of almost eight hundred million, which people keep saying, no, no, we didn't, we were in the hole, it was terrible, now we're out, you know, these two years have gotten us out. Not true, we had a surplus. But the reason we had that surplus and we have the surplus now is back then we had to do some major cutting because our revenues were so down, ten percent across the board, all those painful things. Right now, we have a surplus, we need to restore some of those cuts we made to public services, to education, to, you know, we have class, huge class sizes now, we've cut programs, all those things, mental health, you know, we need to make sure we have those things. That's the purpose of government, to help people that can't necessarily.
Well, it's a quality of life issue and then people will come and businesses will come because it's a great place to live.
And water, and water, our water, you know, we need to be working on.
Water quality is another issue. We need some investment in that, we've got some great opportunities that people are, you know, all the watersheds that, in this area, we've got some amazing projects going on, we really do. But we want to invest in that process.
Put some money into those. I mean, people will move to this state if it's a beautiful, if you've got beautiful rivers and streams and the air smells good, you don't have to hold your nose as you drive down, you know, to Des Moines, those sorts of things. So I think those are issues we really need to look at.
Yes.
What's the status on upgrading of roads, bridges, et cetera? Now, I realize it's a nationwide problem, but I think a recent study came out within the last two weeks that more than fifty to sixty percent of bridges within the state are in deplorable condition. And.
Some schools have to actually drive around the bridges to get, I mean, so it's costing schools more just to get around these bridges that are unsafe.
And is there a set aside?
Well, the road use tax.
Part of the budget.
Well, unless guaranteed, what the governor suggested was finding efficiencies. And I, you know, he asked him to find sixty or forty, I can't remember, million in the DOT, but you're correct.
We need more than that anyway.
Our, you know, there is a problem out there. And if you drive any amount, you're going to, you're going to know that. And especially, there's heavier equipment, there's trucks, there's commerce going through. So to ignore that, you know, we just can't.
I think a lot of legislators are waiting to see if the governor's going to say, yes, I will support a gas tax, or no, I won't, or what, I mean, because he's just kind of waffling there. We don't really know where he's at. And for, one, the House or the Senate to come out, I don't know, you know, I don't see, it needs to be a joint effort. And yes, we'll pass maybe another penny or two or whatever onto the gas. We haven't done anything with it since, what, nineteen eighty-nine?
Has the Department of Transportation come up with any stance that this needs to be replaced before it falls down and we have what happened?
There's a breakthrough, I mean, if you wanted to access that, you could go through.
I have, and I've seen it mentioned for the last five to seven years, yes, in trouble, but we're going to keep deferring maintenance.
Right.
While having.
And then the price tag keeps going up.
You keep deferring maintenance.
Well, you have counties and cities doing the very same thing as well.
And it's hard, you have some legislators in districts where the population says absolutely no raise in any tax, you know, and very firm about that. So it's hard for some of them to say, okay, we're going to raise the gas tax, you know. But that's where the repairs will have to come from, that fund.
I think there was a proposal by Senator from Sioux City to just put a hundred, take a hundred million out of one-time money to do some infrastructure on.
It's a continuing issue, so that's.
Yeah, right. Well, because, yeah, you have to continue to invest in roads.
I think it'll take over two hundred and forty million, something like that.
What's the lottery jackpot tonight?
And what are our chances?
I want to switch gears and talk about something else now. You've been brought into this now from, due to city hall. There's talk at city hall of either diminishing or completely shutting down our Human Rights Agency, which is a combination of the Human Rights Commission and the department, run by Lionel Foster. Part of what they're saying at city hall, the mayor, Eric Bookmeyer, and Scott Torrequist and others on the council, is that, well, we can shut that down or diminish it and the state agency can then pick up the slack. What's your thoughts on that?
I try, I mean, I try not to get involved in city politics. I think we need someone locally for human rights issues, I really do, you know. I think it's good to have, we took some of the services away from people going into nursing homes and put it in council bluffs where they could have, you know, to get the waivers and everything, it used to be right here in Mason City. And you'd get it done like that, now the waiting list is months long. And so I think if we can do local help, it's always better.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
I'm really in local control, what you can keep on a basis where you know the folks that you're dealing with, that's very helpful.
Okay.
And I think that's a, you know, to add it to the local or down in.
Yeah, the concern is the, yeah.
And there's a difference, actually, they have an opportunity to get grants differently here, I mean, it's.
Yeah, he secures federal money, yeah.
Talking about that, but.
No, and I know you don't want to get involved locally, but.
Somewhere they get their sources of money, because some of the stuff comes from grants and there's different opportunities for different places, so.
Okay, good enough, thank you.
But I think.
Okay, I want to talk about violent video games.
About what? I don't play them. Violent video games, I don't know.
There's something tied into mental health to a great deal.
Yeah, I just don't know, as two state legislators, we're going to be able to stop.
Well, no, in Missouri, they're considering putting a special tax on violent video games. Because kids, according to USA Today, yesterday, because kids have access to these mature games. And it's something that, there's some research that backs up the idea that.
Desensitize people.
Desensitize people, it's also aggressive attitudes. And so that's something that we might want to think about. And then, you know, there's only one school, the Des Moines School, we got the Green Ribbon Criteria. You know, pro-environment, you know, all that kind of stuff. Came out last year where it was like seventy-seven schools nationwide that got this Green Ribbon Award.
Oh, for recycling and natural.
Just building green.
Building green.
All that kind of stuff, and the award in Des Moines, school was the only one. So, so I was thinking, well, why don't we tax the video games and use the money to upgrade our schools to the Green Ribbon standard?
Well, every time you tax something, everybody's after that, whatever you do.
We had a bill last year, Dan Kelly had it in the House on environmental protection, he's going to submit it again to encourage schools to go green with their supplies and.
We did that, I did that in the Senate with three.
But the House won't pass it, I mean, we.
We passed it in the Senate.
Two years ago, they, we had passed a bill that there should be no styrofoam on the House floor.
Yeah, but see, some of these schools have like solar panels, geothermal heating. And you talk about the school, you know, there's.
But some of that's big investments for them.
Yeah, I know.
And so that's why schools, I mean, if you're going to put windmill, I mean.
Yeah, but, I mean.
That's a big cost for them.
All our state universities should have windmills, I mean, they should.
Eldora has a wind turbine that generates money for the schools during, you know.
But sometimes that initial investment, when you don't know where everything's now, I mean.
I know, I'm just saying that.
So that, for the schools, I can see why they don't necessarily step out there all the time, because that's a, oh, man, budgetary.
That's a big budget.
You're going to hire, you know, teachers.
But I'm just saying that the state could put the tax in that would be used for upgrading our schools. I mean, we are paying sixty dollars for a video game, you know what, a few more dollars that could go for it.
They'll go across the border. I'd like to wait and see what the federal government does, too. I really hope they come up with some, I mean, when you tell people they have to build a fence around their swimming pool because it's dangerous and we can't do certain things with, you know, assault weapons, it's like, and I'm not an expert in guns or anything, but it seems to me we can have a few restrictions.
The only time we would need them is if the Chinese launched a massive ground attack or something.
Wow, there, I thought I would clarify that. Anyone else have other issues that we haven't addressed?
We have to borrow money from China to finance.
Company we need to work.
Defense.
Mental health, because sane people don't go around.
Can you hear her back there? No, she just said that mental health, you know, sane people don't go around.
And then also, kids aren't learning how to get along with anybody because they sit with their little gizmos.
Communication, online learning.
Yeah.
We'll teach them with online.
Some of the time, but I think it's going overboard because, and if families don't sit down and eat supper together and when and how do they learn to get along?
Families are very stressed, though, too, I mean, you've got a lot of families that are. Families are very stressed, though, too. I mean, you've got a lot of families that are, Iowa's trying to make ends meet, and so, some of that happens.
I understand that.
Iowa ranks number one for both parents working outside the home.
So, you're-
So, they're not home together, you know, that's, that's because we're a low-wage state. The first House, did you hear about our first bill? The first bill coming out of the House this year is a constitutional amendment for right to work.
Oh, for what?
Right to work.
To establish it in the Constitution.
As a constitutional amendment. And the second bill is a constitutional, these are out, and they're gonna be- The second bill's a constitutional amendment to not raise any taxes unless you have three-fifths vote from the public, which was done in, what, nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine? It was resoundingly voted down by the general Iowa population.
And we are, we've had balanced budgets, so I think we, yeah, so anyway.
Do we need to like, we get to vote on it?
People voting for higher taxes for themselves.
So, anyway, those are the first-
What was I saying?
Yes.
Will, uh, the Supreme Court justices still be subject to election? Uh, or is that law being challenged or possible removal?
No, I haven't heard anything that that, that election process would change. There'll be some up for election next time, too.
One of the thi- oh, go ahead.
Yes.
On that same note, we have a state committee that appoints lawyers for judgeship. And I understand, according to a clip in the paper, that the good governor has, has, uh, put a, a number of people on there that were, one of them specifically rejected for judgeship in the past because of his partisan viewpoints. Isn't this politicizing that same committee and therefore going to politicize our entire selection of judges in the state? Something we've tried to get away from?
Their selection, I mean, the governor has that opportunity.
Usually, the committees have to be made up, have to be so many Republicans, so many Democrats, I mean-
To some extent, yeah.
That's what they try to do, anyway.
There's varying degrees and beliefs in everybody, so, I mean, you're not gonna give one Democrat to be the same and one Republican to think the same.
It's still good.
Especially the Democrats, we like to disagree on everything, this is who we are. But I would say that the governor has that opportunity. When you elect a governor, you're electing who's gonna be appointed, and lots, lots of opportunities. The Senate then has the opportunity to confirm. Um, and it takes a certain amount of votes to confirm most folks, but-
But not the committees? You don't do the committees, do you?
We, we do, yeah. They, they will come before the judgeship, so, yeah.
So, that, that, you have that up?
But for, for most folks, I mean, once, because the governor will find someone of the same philosophical belief that he wants to.
I just wanna cite an example of the high cost of education in my own personal life. When I went to medical school, uh, the average student graduated with about a four-thousand-dollar debt. That was forty years ago. Now, the average student, medical student graduates with a, and a debt of a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Ten thousand in the state in education.
And last year, we, we set in motion some opportunities for public private, with medical school, and we've tried to work with Des Moines University and the University of Iowa in different communities. I know, uh, that we, we see the need for physicians all across the state, especially rural areas. And then, we can get into specific types. Let's see, you would be an OBGYN, retired person that doesn't wanna come back on duty, I'm sure. But, but just that need is out there, and there's also the need for psychiatrists. We're talking mental health. So, you know, we've got a workforce issue on, on many of those.
Small communities have got a program inducing these high-debt physicians to come to their community and forgiving half of their debt.
Part of their loans, yeah.
I think that's a great program.
And, and we need to educate the students going in, too. I mean, I know some of these kids going in don't look to the future to see what they're really going to be owing, you know? They, um, I can think of one person in particular, our granddaughter, you know, she has some, some loans, and they manage to go out to the Olive Garden to eat, well, I've got the money, you know, so, it's just- They don't seem to realize that in the end, they're gonna be owing that money back. They're gonna have to make payments and everything else. I met with a group that, that oversees some of the loans that are, you know, the kids are having, they're, they're trying to help them figure out how to pay it all back. They've started a program which goes with ICAN, um, a, a program that kids start planning for their future, um, where they can take, they can play a game. They get so much money, and this is, they're gonna start budgeting it out, just so kids have an idea of how to budget the money and what not to spend it on, you know?
I think consumer credit counseling is a program that they go into the schools and do that, and, you know. Don't get me started on payday loans, I think are a side.
There's no limit to what they can charge in interest. You have no control?
You can't, oh, yeah, that could be a whole conference, huh?
You can, what, would you speak to that?
On payday loans.
We had it, but-
We, we passed it, you know, out of committees and stuff, but what happens is, and, you know, if you're, you can go get immediate money before you get your paycheck, before you get your paycheck, or they do that with your, um, tax returns and-
It's a rut.
Yeah, and, uh, what, you can't get out of it, because the, the amount of interest that gets charged is phenomenal. And, um, I know personally, a lot of folks that, the overwhelming amount of money that they have to continue to borrow to pay their, pay off what they've already borrowed, it's just unbelievable.
We have an employee who's in that cycle right now, and we're trying to help him get out of it.
Exactly.
But he access some of them online.
Oh, that's even worse.
There's three or four just here in town.
Yeah, there are.
But, um, and most of the money, I mean, they're not going to local banks or credit unions. This money is going out of state, so, um, that's-
Kinda like chamber dues, right?
But the, and the other thing is, is no one has brought it up here, is access to healthcare. Um, I, I just think that's one of those critical things that we see.
Is the governor gonna take the Medicaid expansion?
And that's, that was, is it, we have a hundred and fifty Iowa, a thousand Iowans that could, could be able to get medical care, and we really are concerned that that happens, because we've heard from, uh, hospital providers, I mean, you're all paying uncompensated care right now, all being in this room. And so, if we don't take advantage of this, other states are. We even had, in the last week, I believe, there were other states that said, yeah, this is probably gonna be a good idea. Because, uh, look at the mental health system. I mean, that's another piece, but this will help some of those folks get mental health services that are, you know, just not able to get there now. But you're, you're, they're gonna be using emergency rooms if you don't. What we're looking at is this opportunity to get a medical home, so that they would be going to a place in getting the, the care before the crisis situation, before they walk into the emergency room and the whole, um, care of the family.
Katie?
Okay, I have a hard time understanding this, 'cause you know, I'm not in that situation. My parents are passed, but now I've been involved with a little person in the community who has no one, just this last week.
No one?
No one.
Oh, that, that's very common.
I know.
Yeah.
And so, okay, so, I'm just trying to understand this, because instead of getting livid at the wrong people, um, he was admitted, he was run over by a car on Monday. He's eighty-eight years old.
He's what?
He's eighty-eight years old, run over by a car twice on Monday.
Eighty-eight or eighty?
Eighty-eight years old, yeah. His family was killed by the Nazis, and when he was seven. But anyway, here he is, and he does have someone, I think, that helps him out. I just know him through my daughters. They work at Pro's, and so, they see people, and they've connected with this person, and he's spent time with our family. But, um, what we ran into this week is that he was admitted to the hospital, not admitted, he was put in the hospital, and then by Wednesday, with swollen feet-
He's gone up.
Broken toe. My daughter came home, and she said, Mom, they're sending him home, and he's not ready to go home. And I said, you're right, he's not. What is that? That's ridiculous. So, I called the social worker, and I understand-
Did he go home?
But I have no right. Okay, he did go home, but the doctor released him and sent him home to his apartment, which is upstairs. He can't walk. He could hardly walk, anyway. Okay, so, I have no legal, I have, I can't, you know, we can't-
You can't access his records.
Which is fine, I respect that, okay. But anyway, the kicker is, I asked the social worker, how come they sent him home? I thought he would go to West Campus, be evaluated to see if he could live independently. No, he wasn't directly admitted into the hospital. I said, excuse me? He was put in by the ambulance. They didn't put him in the hospital. I didn't, I'm, I have a hard time understanding them. Well, then I was talking to other people, and they said, no, that's happened to them, too. But anyhow, he ended up, the person who took him home knew he couldn't, so they called the ambulance, and he went back to the hospital. I mean, it's just ridiculous what's happening. And so, I'm wondering, is this where I go to? Do I go to you guys to write into the issues about that?
We can talk a little bit about that, but this could get really into the weeds on this with the-
Right, but I think, is that what you're talking about as far as the healthcare and the glitches?
That, that's a piece of it.
Okay.
But I do think, um, I mean, that's somewhat of a regulation as to, um, how you get into skilled care and-
Right, and only had to be admitted.
Right, and whether he gets paid, and, you know, there are groups of individuals that work at the hospital that work just in those, uh, those particular, uh, issues, and, and they could visit with you about a, not about his case perhaps, but about how things are. They're frustrated as well.
Right, that's true.
So, it isn't like the hospital wants kinda this stuff to happen, so, in their defense.
Right.
But there are some complications. Ginger probably could give you even more stories, but-
If, uh, he appoints you his, uh, general party attorney for healthcare, uh, you don't have to be a relative.
Right, I do know, but they may not have that relationship.
Yeah.
And a lot of folks use his-
And what, what they, what the hospital did was that is considered an unsafe discharge.
Okay.
They're liable.
Okay, okay, but it's back in, so I was happy about that.
Without knowing all the details, it's kinda hard to talk about it up at this level.
Right, but I just wondered if that's what you're getting at. I'm-
No, no, what I'm getting at is people with a hundred and thirty-eight percent poverty, a hundred and thirty-eight percent of poverty level. Those folks, because of the Affordable Healthcare Act, will have an opportunity, every state has the opportunity to put those people on for, for Medicare.
Covered instead of-
Expansion of, right. So, they will have the coverage. And with that, they, that would be for three years, and then it would be a ninety, ten percent, um, for healthcare coverage, where the state paying the ten percent, that's the ninety now. Hospitals are, are looking at that as, as an important part, because they're seeing uncompensated care, is what they're telling us. It, it isn't like, just, hey, this is a great idea. Hospitals are sharing with us, um, other folks are sharing with us, consumers. Because right now, somebody ends up in, um, emergency room, as opposed to going to a medical home and getting the annual physical, the, um, inoculations, um, all sorts of preventative, uh, healthcare. So, we're, you know, we believe that it would actually, Alan, did you-
Isn't Bran said against that, is he?
He has shared that he is not interested in that at this point.
It's kind of-
But I do think that that's where it's important that folks here contact the governor's office, contact your legislators about those things, because there is an advantage, because when someone goes to the hospital emergency room with no resources, they're gonna, and they're in a crisis situation, they have to take care of it.
And we pay.
Doctor, doctor. Your, I mean, don't they-
Our bills are higher because of it.
Yeah, and your rates then on your insurance is gonna be higher.
You think these situations are bad now, wait till the cuts in Medicare, the Obamacare come forward.
And they have already been, that is why, how you pay, because they've already happened. I mean, they, they are gonna happen. They've been agreed to, the cuts to Medicare have happened on a, you know, that's not a state-level decision.
So, it's gonna get worse?
Yes.
The, the, it's hard when it's someone with no family. I think that, you know, I look back on my, my dad and how he needed help with my stepmom, going through all the legal, the paperwork, and all those sorts of things, so.
And what I do on a daily basis, I see people with no families until they connect with a case manager, and thank goodness they do. Because, and not everybody makes great choices down the road, or have, all the way to where they're getting. But we as a society have to take care of the most vulnerable folks that, um, that we can. And so, I think when the case manager gets involved, we see some really good things happening. And when you, you know, seniors, I mean, that are alone, that don't have a lot of contact, I mean, um, a lot of times our families are at a great distance, and there's dementia involved and all sorts of things that, um, they're not the same that they were twenty years ago.
Yes.
The weather's supposed to get, start getting severe this afternoon.
Yes, it is.
We're in, in for, it sounds like, I mean-
Cold weather, man.
They were talking about the icy wind gusts up to like forty-some miles per hour.
Yeah, I have friends coming up from, people are coming up from Des Moines to kinda help out in a special election, and I said, if you have a down jacket, find two of them. It's going to be cold out there, not indoors.
Something to wrap around your head.
Right.
You gotta steal it off and move them.
Um, any other questions or?
Yes, Jerry.
Uh, it's time to apply the, uh, about commercial property tax relief. And by the way, we do need a, uh, where I work, but we pay the property taxes for some of the retail outlets. It's unbelievable.
Right.
But my, my concern is, of that, about, did he ship, it's already been shifted away from agriculture, not even shipped away from retail, but commercial, not because only one person left, that's residential.
And our folks, we're, we're not intending to do that in the Senate Democrats.
So, but if you pull it away, and you're not intending to do that, what are you gonna, how do you?
How do you get the money?
Where do you get the money from?
From the-
I mean, if you're gonna, you know, lower that quite a bit down, I mean, it's gotta come somewhere.
Are you talking about the governor's proposal?
Yeah.
No.
'Cause he talked about taking some of the surplus of-
I just, no, I talked about, we've talked about the re, you know, commercial tax relief, property tax relief. And you don't wanna shift it to the residential, so where, where does it get shifted to?
The, the general fund moves back, goes back in and puts in those tax credits. Backfills, backfills the tax credits, so, um-
Some of y'all share.
So, the, doesn't, so it doesn't go back to city government, because if, if you just cut services and city and county governments have to, then they would put it out to residential customers and, or property taxpayers, excuse me. This way, it comes back in as a tax credit to that individual, uh, their property taxes, and so, the check goes back to them.
Okay.
Yes.
Where, where does the city get the money, then?
The city isn't, it, of course, goes off your property tax.
That's right.
But that comes from the general fund, or you can say the reserve funds, or whatever.
You're saying if they get personal property-
It's coming from the state, if that's what I'm saying.
But he's saying if you give it to the personal, to the person that owns the home, how's the city getting the money?
It's not going to the person, so this is for commercial, is the proposal. Four out of five, uh, commercials, property taxes would do better.
I guess it's going over my head, if, if we are looking to lower property tax rate on commercial property, which does need to be done, but that means we're gonna lower revenue coming in, right?
For the cities.
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
No, you're not, no, you're not, 'cause we're refilling that from the back. We're not-
You're saying where's the money from?
Where's the money come from, is what I'm asking.
State funds.
State funds.
So, it's gonna come out of the general fund, thanks to all of us.
Which is, yeah.
Well, it's, I mean, it's still the same thing, if you want it, and it's going out, you know, with the former proposal with sixty percent for everybody, which would be the Walmarts and stuff. But we have a base on the amount, and I can show you that. Um, it starts out, you know, you get so much, and we do it in five years, so it would be, I think, two-hundred-and-fifty million in five years, and it's a gradual, and you get, you know, it's like six-hundred dollars property tax, 'cause it's not full. You know, you're not getting a full lot on that.
Okay.
Just been, I'll sit down with you and show you how it works with it.
Could you speak to Matt Schultz, the Secretary of State? Does he get to do whatever he wants to?
Well, no, he, he forgot that he's not the legislature.
Do you, do you get to say whether what he's doing is legal or fair?
He doesn't, he doesn't think so. He went to administrative rules as opposed to going through, most generally, if a department has, you know, something major, you know, if it's, I don't know, I'm trying to think of an example that wouldn't be major, but, you know, if it's major, you legislate. For example, the Department of Human Services brings me a bunch of bills, Department of Public Health does, 'cause I chair Human Resources, and so, um, we, you know, sign a bill, it's a study bill, and then we have a discussion about it. And so, the legislative committee in the Senate decides whether they're gonna move something past, something- And so the legislative committee in the Senate decides whether they're gonna move something past, something whatever, moves up forward. And if it becomes law, the governor signs it, then it goes to the Rules Committee. He's going right to the Rules Committee.
Can he do that though?
Well, he thinks he can, we say no.
Can, can he stop?
Well, actually, yeah, there's legislators on the administrative rule committee, so we're hoping so, yes.
Yeah, it's hard to watch. He evidently doesn't have a background as a county auditor because he doesn't seem to understand how our election process works.
I think he understands exactly how it works.
He is using it to disadvantage his.
He doesn't understand how you want this.
Understanding of the law. We had, you know, he spent a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year on a DCI agent.
He took them off major crimes to work on voting fraud.
My point was that when he did that is, we had, we had two girls missing in Cedar Falls. Couldn't we have used that DCI agent to better means, you know? Or if he has that much money, why doesn't he get in the schools more and educate about how elections work, how to get registered, encourage people to vote? I mean, I can't see someone committing fraud by voting for who they want to win with the risk of going to jail for five years, at least five years, I think it is, you know? It's a felony. Why would you risk that on a vote for one vote, you know? It's just crazy to think people would.
Are they aware of the penalties though? Are they aware of the penalties, you know?
Oh, I think people.
And, and I don't think they're having.
I think sometimes people are confused.
Carryover from these poor drug companies where they have a true stance.
You had people that wanted to vote just last year and.
Voter ID.
Because of the system they have here, you can actually check, but if you're a felon, you can't vote. And you haven't, you know, done all your things that get you off the list. So they would go and if you went to the, actually, you could just call and the auditor's office can tell you if they're allowed to vote or not.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, there is.
Voter fraud and.
There's, and that might have been confusing because you could vote for a while.
And then when Governor Branstad was elected, he immediately rescinded that. So that might have been confusing to some people that had served their time.
So I had an individual, I said, I wouldn't go unless I called the auditor's office and they did. And whatever the result was, I don't know what the result was, but, but you can do that. So I think people are confused as to whether they can vote or not.
He's making them more confused.
Yeah, well, that's the plan.
If you vote by accident then, can you be prosecuted? By accident, let's say if a felon, off the proven intent.
Like people they've, they've arrested, I don't think they've been convicted yet.
They have an arrested one, they found them, but, but they didn't have the intent. It was all accidental.
Yeah.
They thought they could legally vote, so they did.
So.
Interesting.
And the amount of money going into finding five people? I mean, you know, it's like, use that money in a better way. That's what I think, yes.
Different here entirely, it's a, it's a question that I'm gonna ask you again down the road at future forums. It's early on, I realize you're just down there, just everything getting started. How partisan is it down there? Is, is it already us and them or is it, it's still political or?
I think.
I'll ask this again as we go along, but it seems to get more and more partisan as the percentage.
I was in one committee meeting that was very, very partisan and that was appropriations and discussing the governor's budget, I mean, there was some of that. But then in my Human Services Committee, we, you know, get together and we talk about things and we try not to get. Just sometimes it's the nature of committee or nature of how, who's speaking, you know, all of that. It's just like any other situation.
Okay, the other side.
Well, part of it is that, who's on the committee, but leadership is a big part of it too, it sets the tone. And I think when the governor came out and said, I want my reform bill before you get, you know, the budget money for twenty fourteen, kind of was a, was a way of, you know, setting the stage for, we don't wanna do that, we wanna work together. But I have met with the Chair of the Education Committee and he's very, I mean, we've gotten along very well. He and I saw issues, a lot of issues the same way. But whether his leadership will let him do the things that he wants to do or let us do the things that we wanna do, that's another story, so we'll see. The fact that they're bringing these two bills out bothers me, you know? There are issues like jobs and, and, you know, debt for college and there's other issues that I think are more important than maybe making constitutional amendments. And I know there's going to be some gun bills coming up to lessen the restrictions on guns again. So there'll be issues coming up that, that just commonly pull people apart, you know? In the House, we seem to have a little more trouble with that. They say the House is like a barrel full of, well, I like to say a barrel full of frogs, you know? There's a couple out, you get them in, a couple go out over here, so you think you have everybody together on an issue and all of a sudden somebody's like, well, no, I'm not voting for that, so. I don't know, I hope not. It would be nice if we could work together for Iowa, I mean, I think that's what, what we're there for. I think people are very frustrated with partisan bickering and I, I think it's not productive.
We see too much of it in DC, you know?
Way too much in DC.
And I think if we can work together, I think that's.
Ideal.
We have to spend a lot of time on divisive social issues again.
Not so far.
We'll see.
Well, the only reason it ends up being partisan is because no one wants to break with their party line. You know, they don't wanna be the odd guy, whether it's right or wrong, they're gonna stick with their party line, right?
Well, there are definite values that you have, like, you know, you talked about the value of middle class, good wages for, you know, for a decent living. We should be able to make good wages in this state, there's some of those values that, that.
Well, and we should focus on some of those things that are important, investing community colleges. People need to be, you know, we need a workforce that's available workforce so people can make a living and they can provide for their families and I think that's key. I don't, I don't think anybody needs to expect to be millionaires. We just want a living wage for folks that, so they can buy things and make this whole community, I, you know.
Justice Kading, Supreme Court Justice Kading had a, an interesting fact during his speech. He said that juvenile petitions, that's people, you know, court actions for juveniles have gone up ninety-three percent in the last ten years. And adults was like forty-seven percent. Some of those issues are what we should be working on, you know? We really should, the poverty rate in this.
What's wrong at the root of things?
The poverty rate has.
We need more gospel.
Almost doubled in the past ten years, you know? We have, what, one in three or one in five kids don't get their basic needs met?
One in five.
One in five are coming to school hungry, tired, abused.
Well, that's not what our mayor just got done saying in his State of the City address. He said, everything's great in Mason City, it's five percent unemployment, it's, everything's just going great. But according to you guys, we've got kids with no, no food, you gotta send them home with food in their backpacks, we're underemployed, there's no industry coming here, Fort Dodge is kicking our tails down there, bringing hundreds of blue collar jobs in. What's the truth? Is he right or are you guys right?
Well, we can give you the children account study and that's a pretty important piece that shows where poverty is and I think you're familiar with that particular report.
And Katie works with it.
Yeah, those kids are hungry. They come in and.
And how you learn, you cannot learn when you don't have those basic needs met and until you meet those basic needs for a family, you're gonna continue to have the turmoil.
And on behalf of the parents, some of them are working three jobs. And then you wonder why a juvenile increase is up.
It's easy to have five percent unemployment when you're working three jobs, isn't it?
Exactly, underemployed.
Seven dollars and fifty cents a pop at each place, you know, I mean, come on.
We even found in our school, they cannot sit at a table to eat because they're not at tables to eat at home, you know, in practice. And so we have our cafeteria, if you go in there, there's sections taped off so they learn about body space, they learn how to sit and have conversations at a table.
And those are all things we didn't have to do years ago. I mean, you just, you talk.
And they wanna do it, you know, on behalf of the children, they wanna do it once they learn, you know, they are, they, they have pride in them, so.
The families in Iowa on food assistance has tripled in the last ten years. I mean, all those issues are things that the state needs to be dealing with, you know, in my opinion, not the, not the social divisive issues, but those, yes.
Well, I can understand all these so-called people on poverty, how can they afford four hundred dollar cell phones?
I don't know that they, I mean, I don't know that they have four hundred dollars.
They can afford cigarettes, they can afford beer.
They're bright store.
No, I'm gonna speak on that, I have to speak on that. That is not true, I will tell you that, and anybody who studies.
People want to steal.
No, I'm not saying that. I've known very wealthy people that steal.
I didn't say anybody's.
Just listen, I want you to listen to me for just a minute. People in poverty, we wonder, and I used to do this too, why do they have the satellite dishes? Why do they have the cigarettes? Why is that? Because I grew up where you put a savings in. They don't have it. It is a bartering system oftentimes and they don't have that. And so I'm not saying that they're out stealing and that they are, you know, they're the criminals because they aren't, I will tell you that. I have children that come every day to my school and they work, they're paid hard. And their parents work hard too and they don't have the four hundred dollar cell phones. So when we have that in our heads, when we have that stigma in our heads about this.
You interrupted me from getting.
We are the ones, we are the ones who are putting up our own prejudice. You know, sometimes we have to stop and think and reach out, why are we being prejudiced against these people? You know, it's, no, I didn't interrupt you.
All these people, this welfare and everything, you go get their checks and stuff from the government, why in the hell, when they get arrested, can't they make them work at all? Pick up their trash, clear up East Park and also more of these rivers, put them to work. Work fair instead of welfare. I never had welfare in my life, I worked.
Jim, I think there is a community service program that people do pay back to the community and work.
Not around here, they don't. They get it, they go to jail and the judges clap their hands and turn them loose so they can rob again.
Well, I don't know about what particular cases, but you, there is an opportunity for community service.
Some of these characters that drink themselves into oblivion so they can become disabled and get a government check every month, won't do illegal work.
Could you tell me exactly what terms you would use to call the governor in regard to care? That, so we can, so that our insurances don't go up? What, what terms do you use to explain what you want in regard to what you were talking about?
Medicaid expansion or the healthcare. I, I consider it access to healthcare, but it is, what the governor would understand is Medicaid expansion. Because now.
Medicaid expansion?
Now, to be on Medicaid, you know, you have to be a disabled individual or have a child or, and then there is a certain poverty rate. You know, our biggest cost on Medicaid is?
Emergency.
Emergencies?
Senior citizens.
Yeah.
It's the senior citizens. Little kids, they're not expensive.
Nursing homes.
Nursing homes, exactly. And we put in many, many, you know, accommodations to make sure that we, in fact, we got a BIP grant, which is the Bouncing Initiative Grant, because the state of Iowa works so well to keep people out of, of facilities. And, and that was, you know, something that we're very proud of. However, these are folks that, and so it's just because somebody's poor doesn't mean they're on Medicaid. I mean, a lot of people assume things that aren't true. And when they, you know, a single male doesn't necessarily, a single female doesn't. Just because they're poor doesn't mean they're getting Medicaid now. But they do have healthcare issues and a lot of folks aren't even signed up for these, the services. I think it's better to have a, a healthy kid sitting next to my grandchild in, in the school or preschool than to have somebody who's not getting any kind of healthcare. And that's with adults as well. People in work and, you know, making minimum wage, you know.
To call it Medicaid expansion.
Right.
And that will cover.
And I'm glad you brought that up because that really makes a difference if we hear from people. I talked to the governor's office, I'm assuming to.
Right, I talked to some educators last night and they didn't realize, I said, you know, sometimes we never hear from public teachers, public ed teachers. And legislators will say, well, they really don't care, we haven't heard from them. And it's not, I said, they're busy, they're super, super busy. People working in like your job, United Way, you're busy all the time trying to, you know, help people. But if you could take just a minute and let the governor or myself or anyone else know, you know, down in Des Moines, know where you're at, what you stand for, would be very helpful.
And into, you know, you, I think there's a lot of people that belong to organizations that don't know the philosophical or even agree on a philosophical level with a lot of organizations. They're there because, you know.
Well, you're taught to join the chamber, I mean, you go take a business class and the first thing they, they pound in your head is join the chamber and, you know.
But there are a lot of communities, that those are, are parts of things that keep communities together.
Sure.
And they promote the, I mean, you go to any website, all the little, little communities, they're all. Do they have a bigger picture of what somebody's doing on a national level? You know, I'm not, I'm not so sure that that's.
Not every member, I would agree with you there.
I'm, I'm not so sure that's the case. And, and we have been lobbied in, in terms to, on issues that maybe the chamber doesn't agree with by some members of the chamber on both sides of it. So to say that every person who belongs to any organization is gonna say, this is how we think isn't gonna happen. I'm a Democrat, so I'm so used.
I agree with the big, big organizations.
But the national, you know.
And I just wanted to point out what I pointed out with respect to you both and, you know, and let you bring it to your attention.
We as Democrats don't always agree on everything, but we, we have core values that you kinda know. And I don't know that that's necessarily the way every organization is. But I think in, in some of those other kind of things, it is.
I'm not sure the chamber is real bashful about hiding what they're up to though. I mean, it's in the news, it's all over, I mean, just Google US Chamber agenda, what they're fighting for, what they're, what they're stand for. It's diabolically opposed to what you two are in favor of.
Well, but a lot of folks are so busy with their lives, you know, with.
Yeah, but you two are educated ladies that know.
But people who run for office think, oh man, everybody's like really interested in this, they're really interested in this. They're not, and now since they're first our bubble, but the, the other part is, is they don't care about elections until like a week before or afterwards.
Or, why are they voting like that? It's like, well, that's what you voted for, but, you know. Listen to what people speak for.
I'm a big believer in educating, that's one of our roles, is to educate the folks on this, you know? Not just to go down and vote. And, you know, every day I walk into that Capitol, I, I'm still impressed with it. It's people's house and I'm, I'm gonna invite any of you down there to, to do that. I just, you know, think, it was, when my grandchildren came down, they're pretty darn little, they thought it was like the Wizard of Oz, you know?
Sure, they gold dome, dual bird style.
Whole, but, I mean, it, it's an impressive place, but that is something that isn't about us who've served for a very small time in this legislature. It's about a lot of folks that have, have visited with a lot of folks down the road and we wanna continue that, I think. And, you know, my district gets bigger and changes and so we thank you for being here tonight, today and we're, we're, we're gonna go to other things because we've got, my husband and I have other places we have to be today yet. So the district gets bigger and changes.
Be glad to stay and talk if anyone wants to visit.